Yeah, now that kind of, that pumps me up. Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, I'm looking at you.
You got touches of mind.
Would you?
You do a reification for us.
Now, you know, I don't want to throw you under the bus, you know, just to... Hey.
I'm not saying we didn't tell you.
Hey. Boy, that's a judge.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oop!
(inaudible)
Can I hurt Jerry?
Yes.
Really?
Oh.
Jerry's not gonna be here, though.
We may be wrong, but I thought... But here we'll get to it.
Good morning. Let's call this work session order Rankin County Board of Supervisors on July the 3rd, a little bit after nine. This time, I'd like to have Mr. Craig Slade, your reification force, please.
That's right. Father, we just want to stop and pause now at the start... While we're counting on you to provide us with wisdom and discernment, Father, that you would prepare our minds and our hearts to take care of the business of the county, to think of others, Father, more highly than we do of ourselves, to look for ways to serve others. Fathers, we consider this time of year, we celebrate our independence, our freedoms. Father, we thank you because you provide that... And you guard it. And so, we are looking to you and counting on you, Father, to continue to be the provider and the protector of the freedoms that we enjoy. Thank you for the privilege of public service, Lord. Help us to use that privilege in a way that pleases you and that benefits our fellow man. Pray this in the name of Jesus.
Amen. Mr. President, if you'd allow, in light of the... ...I'd like to pledge allegiance. Would you indulge us in letting me lead us in the pledge?
I sure will. If everyone will stand.
All right. Place the flag. Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hey, I'd like to retract one thing. We're calling the Board of Supervisors meeting to order instead of just the work session. I've been brought down by Ms. Jan Stendy. At this time, we have an appointment of District Four Constable position, action to appoint Gary Wyndham as Rankin County District Four Constable to serve the unexpired term of former Rankin County District Four Constable Tim Gardner, or to serve until the successor thereof is duly elected and qualified pursuant to Mississippi law. Need action on that.
I'll make a motion to appoint Gary Wyndham.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we have Judge Kin Fairly that will be administering the oath of office. Thank you.
Good morning. This is a good day for Rankin County folk with this swearing-in ceremony of Gary Wyndham as your District Four Constable. We have blessed to have the finest justice court system in the state. I know Judge Josh McCrory is here, Judge John Shirley, Jessica Massey, the hardest-working bunch of hearts in the state are lined up on the wall here. Rankin County working to make this continue to be the best county in the state. Gary, I'm gonna ask you to stand here, place your left hand on the bough. Ms. Judy, you'll hold that. I'm gonna get my ducks in a row. Raise your right hand. And repeat after I'm gonna give you... I, Gary Wyndham.
I, Gary Wyndham.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified...
From holding the office.
Of Rankin County Constable, District Four.
Rankin County Constable, District Four.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office...
...of which I'm about to do.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard.
Ready to work.
That's right. Ready to work.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. Good luck, Gary.
Thank you.
Okay, buddy. Okay, at this time, with all that being said, we have a...
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank y'all very much. Okay, at this...
Hello.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. This time, I'd like to call to order Planning Commission meeting to order and consideration of approval of May 29, 2014 minutes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
The first item under old business is just a review of the hearing schedule for Monday. It's for 3D construction. They're requesting a rezoning with a conditional use for property located at 1407 Shallow Road. The property is on the corner of Shallow Road and Dixon Road. It's zoned RE1. They're requesting a change to A2... Or parcel. And it is immediately adjacent to A2 zoning. 3D's application states that the property was improperly designated as manufactured home residential on the existing land use map when the 2010 comprehensive plan was developed, and then subsequently, the land use plan... The applicant believes that that's an administrative error, and he is requesting a map correction. If the application to rezon is approved, 3D is requesting a conditional use to operate a class one rubbish facility on the property. The site plan shows a 200-foot buffer zone around the property. There would be no new construction. The applicant would use the existing office and... View of the property where it comes in off of Shallow Road. This is the property, the entrance here, the existing shed and office. And these are just shots of the actual property. These are surrounding properties in that area. And that hearing is scheduled for Monday.
All righty. Number two.
Out of curiosity, do we have to take, are those, do they have to be tied together? Can we rezon it and not approve the...
Your District Five Supervisors actually stepped in there. I've been thinking about that. We need to separate those. At the time that you gotta take it... So they're consular, but the second hearing is conditionable, conditioned upon the first hearing authorizing a rezoning, if that makes sense. There would be no need for the second hearing if during the first hearing, the board took the position that the property should not be rezoned, if that makes sense. So we should have separate hearings. One will be the rezoning. Results in a rezoning of the property, then the board can entertain the request for conditional use.
There was obviously a reason when they did the comprehensive plan why they put it at RE1. And I think it clearly is shown by the change of the characteristics of that area.
I'm not sure what, I'm really not sure what proof will show at that time we'll have those discussions.
Home, is that right?
No, it's RE1, residential estate. You know, the property was posted and the notice of the hearing was published, and we did receive 31 calls in opposition. So I'll just put that out there for y'all, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Any more questions on that? Number two.
All right, the second is a review for a conditional use for Daniel Jenkins at 2240 Almar Road. The property is shown here off of Almar, it's off of Gunner Road. It's a 1.1 acre parcel zoned RE1A. Mr. Jenkins is requesting the conditional use to convert an existing 20-by-24 building into a small apartment for his daughter. This will be the second dwelling on that parcel, and Mr. Jenkins does have the approval for the sewer system. These are surrounding properties in that neighborhood.
You had any, any feedback on that?
We did receive a few calls, mostly just inquiring as to why the sign was there, and they said they were not opposed as long as that would be for a family member.
Well, you say second dwelling, it is a dwelling, but it's already, I mean, it's actually already there.
It would be a second, it will be converted into a residence, though, at that time, so it would be the second dwelling at that time, if it's approved.
Okay. Is that all with old business?
It is.
New considerations?
Okay, the first item under new considerations is a conditional use request from James Alford and Nathan Barum at 1584 Old Fannin Road. The property is on the west side of Old Fannin Road. This is a conditional use along with a dimensional variance. It's a 1.8 acre parcel that's zoned C2. They're requesting to do an addition onto the existing Pond Masters Building on Old Fannin Road. This is the site plan. It shows their existing two buildings here. They're proposing to add a training center and a underground indoor shooting range. This is the actual training center addition, and then you have the underground area here for the shooting range. The materials and the colors will match the existing structure. It's gonna be a 10-lane shooting range. And now, the variance is on the south side. The existing buildings are located... They're requesting a seven-foot variance from that setback of 15 feet, so the buildings will be in line. They believe that would be more aesthetically pleasing. The variance, if granted, would also allow them to add their handicap parking on the north side of the building in that little setback area, in that little inset area. This existing parking... Need to be changed. They're gonna have parallel parking here in order to allow people to enter and then exit along that existing driveway there. The existing driveway coming in... Coming to the end of the building where the shooting range will be. And then, they're proposing for the rear area to be crushed limestone, have a parking area there.
This is the part where we decide we won't do this or not?
Well, this is, you know, just...
This is at the public hearing?
It will be. Do you want me to finish telling?
Go right ahead. I just didn't like the crushed limestone part.
Okay, well, it is at the very rear, but it's just proposed, so if you don't, you have, you know, the opportunity to let them know that. But anyway, the detention area is shown near the rear property line at the back. The property does back up and adjoin Jack's Crossing subdivision at the rear. There is an existing fence. They do show that they're landscaping as required along the first five feet of the property line. Also, for indoor shooting ranges, the air quality and the filters are regulated by the EPA. The applicants are adding a second layer of insulation and baffles for extra soundproofing. And I believe they're here, if y'all have any questions that y'all would like to ask them.
So, this is gonna be contained, the noise will be contained inside the building?
This is Mr. Alford.
The noise will be contained, it's gonna be underground, so you won't have any noise from the sides and stuff. And what I've done on the ceiling, that will be roof, that will be out, they told me that I needed to put like one layer of insulation. I've got it gone out there, and I put two layers of insulation and then a double panel on top of that. So, I mean, you won't hear, it'll be absolute zero sound.
I'm sure all the neighbors are gonna be concerned about that.
Not only that, what about the safety concerns? That meet, are they gonna be able to meet OSHA regulations? How does that, does that...
Oh, absolutely. You know, we went to the shooting range, shooting range place, and I've got all that there. And... And everything, of course, 100% bulletproof, up to 50 caliber. And what we've done is, I went ahead and put it underground also, just so no... Only foot of dirt around it, which bullet can go through. So, I mean, there's no way that a bullet can escape out of it. Then at the top, what you have, you have steel baffles that angle like this, and, you know, no bullet can go out the top either. So, I mean, there's no way a bullet can escape from it. Safety is, you know, 100%. And like I said, I went underground and even ensured... And then the other...
What's the capacity of this building? How many would it hold?
You know, I don't, I don't know.
With...
Ninety more than 10 shooters at a time?
Ten shooters, that's tiny, isn't it?
And then you'll...
The lanes could have two people at each, at each lane, and we'll have a range marshal in the lanes at all times. This is more gonna be a family-type organization, training centers and stuff, some type of briefing, public training thing. And we have, of course, range marshals up there, and there'll be a range, it's gonna be kinda different, maybe if y'all have been there. There'll be a range marshal there with them as a shoot. We're not gonna just let people give them guns like some of the places have and say, "Shoot." We're gonna be right there, range marshals will be right there.
What is a training center?
A training center is teaching people how to safely use guns and the advanced forces, you know, for concealed carry and that type of thing. We'll have advanced forces and, you know, the police and that type of thing to go there and there.
So, this is gonna be like an office setting for the training center? Won't we actual?
Right.
Okay. Well, this, this also certify people to be able to get their certification in?
Absolutely. Range marshal, everyone will be certified, and all instructors will be certified.
Okay. Any more questions?
English, Paul.
Do I have a motion to set this public hearing for eight, four... By Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Brown. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Okay, the next item under new business is a conditional use request for Don Russell at 206 Hickory Ridge Road. He's requesting to place a 16-by-80 manufactured home on the property. This is the actual lot. There was a mobile home on this property in the past that was moved out, and he wants to bring another one back in. It's a 1.2 acre, 2.5 acre parcel that's zoned RE1A, and manufactured homes are allowed as a conditional use in the RE1A, and they can be done by administrative review. This is a picture of the property as well. These are surrounding properties. That'll be it.
We're gonna do that Monday?
It can be done administratively today.
I just assume, go ahead and prove it today. Make a motion, prove.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. You'll notify him?
Uh, yes, sir, I will.
Okay, thank you.
I am here.
Okay.
Hang on, hang on one second, sir.
Oh, that's, that's this one right here.
Let them confer real quick, and then we'll hear from our attorney.
Are we ready for the next item?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay. Number three.
Okay, this is the nuisance property hearing, District One property, Harvey Spence, Jr., 895 East Harper Street. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if Mr. Spence or anyone else is here to speak on the Harvey Spence nuisance property.
Yes.
Okay. Can you, can you come forward, Mr. Spence?
While Mr. Spence is coming forward, we'll have Vernae go through the photographs.
All right, we received numerous complaints in regard to a dilapidated house that's falling down, inoperable vehicles, and an old deck that needs to be torn down. Mr. Spence did receive the certified mail, and he contacted our office. He said that he wanted to try and make repairs to the home. At that time, they said they would go ahead and get the grass cut and move some of the vehicles. He provided us with the scope of work for the house, and we did issue a building permit. However, no new work has been done, no work has been done to do anything to renovate the house. The building permit states that if no work is started within six months, then it becomes null and void. The place where we were when this all started with a house that's falling down, and there's still a vehicle on the property, and the grass needs to be cut. These are new pictures that were taken yesterday.
So, how long ago was the permit pulled?
The permit was pulled in December of 2013.
Looking at the house, you thought you could get some repairs done to re, I guess, reuse it?
Yes, I'm trying to contact, you know, some people to do that. My son, he is a plumber, he was gonna do the plumbing work, but the grass is cut because I cut the grass a week ago. I don't know where you get these pictures of him from, but the grass is cut. And it's no vehicle on the, on the front. The supervisor told me if I moved the vehicles on the back, it would be all right to vehicle, there was death, which it belongs to my son and not to me. But, so, the permit, what I got, what y'all saying is, it's not valid?
Correct. After six months, it's, becomes null and void.
Well, they didn't say that when I, when I bought it, and got this permit and paid for the permit, that it was gonna last, it's only six months.
It's stated on the permit.
Well, I didn't say that. So, I will get the house torn down.
Much time you need?
I need, I got to get somebody, 'cause I got to see what they charge. I'm retired, and, and you see, I'm, I can't do too much myself, so...
Well, you got to hire somebody to tear it...
I got to find somebody that's in my budget. I just came to say, here, you tear it down. I can't, I can't afford it. So, I got to find somebody that, that can do it reasonable. Years ago, the Department, you used to come there and burn it, burn it down for you.
They won't...
So, if y'all give me a couple of months, you know, to find somebody that's in my budget, I'm gonna get it torn down.
So, you're saying, give you 60 days, you could, you think you could have it torn down? The thing is, you, I mean, I don't know what... I don't know how to say, even begin to tell you what would be in your, in the, you know, what you could expect for your budget is concerned, but I don't know. But the only problem, if it's in 60 days, but it wasn't in your budget, it still needs, somehow, we gotta get...
I might try to get it torn down if I had to get out there and take one plane at a time.
Yeah. I see that put it due, uh, September.
Tell me this, tell me this, why y'all own, own things so much, and there's some houses around me probably in the same shape that it is, and ain't nobody saying nothing about it?
If it's brought, if it's brought to our attention, then we...
Who, 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 some of the names?
I have no idea.
I don't know what they, it's kinda like, I mean, if they bring it, they make a report on it, then they have to, we have to address it. And I agree with you, there's sometimes, there's cases here and here, but this one's the one. And then, when this one's brought up, we, they, the building department addresses it also.
Yeah.
And it's not something we ride around and look for, it's someone makes a, kinda like filing report, I guess, with the Sheriff's Department, they have to pursue it, look at it.
Yeah, I, I, I kinda know what's going on, but...
I couldn't tell you anything about...
I'm gonna tear my house down, and soon as I get to paying for the house that I remodel, I'm gonna build me another house, 'cause that's what, that's my first house, my first wife's house. So, I will rebuild it again.
Okay.
But if y'all can give me...
You think you can do it, so, if we give you 60 days, now, tell me, Craig, what happens if in 60 days, it's not torn down?
We can have a review at that, at appropriate time, whatever that, close to 60 days, if we can, we'll come back and take a look, see what activity's been done. That's what we try to do, is follow up on what activity's been done. So, if Mr. Spence is indicating that he wants an opportunity to try and tear it down, then I think it'd be appropriate to give a 60-day period. We can do a review at that time. If no activity's taken place, he would be, in my opinion, he'd be justified to take the next step, which is to have an inquiry and proceed with the offers that are available.
So, you're looking at first of September sometime around there.
Right. So, Richard, it'd be the first of September.
First of September.
Well, this is July, first of July, so, it gives you July, August, this month and August, so, it'd be first of September.
You got two months.
You can see that it has been started tearing down. Everything might not be moved, would that be a plus on my side?
Well, I think at this point, the word of the day is, we need to be moving forward with tearing it down as soon as possible.
I know, I know. I say, if I...
We can talk, we can talk.
Might be torn down, but everything is not moved from the location.
At this point, you guys have expressed your will, which is that...
if in 60 days it's not torn down?
We can have a review at that, at appropriate time, whatever that, close to 60 days if we can, we'll come back and take a look and see what activity's been done. That's what we try to do, is follow up on what activity's been done. So if Mr. Spence is indicating that he wants an opportunity to try and tear it down, then I think it'd be appropriate to give a 60-day period. We can do a review at that time. If no activity's taken place, he would be, in my opinion, he'd be justified to take the next step, which is to have an inquiry and proceed with the offers that are available.
So you're looking at first of September sometime around there.
So, Richard, it'd be the first of September.
First of September.
Well, this is July, first of July, so it gives you July, August, this month and August, so it'd be first of September.
You got two months.
You can see that it has been started tearing down. Everything might not be moved. Would that be a plus on my side?
Well, I think at this point, the word of the day is, we need to be moving forward with tearing it down as soon as possible.
I know, I know. I say if I.
We can talk.
It might be torn down, but everything is not moved from the location.
At this point, you guys have expressed your will, which is that we begin the process and live quickly to have the house torn down. Mr. Spence and I, or Renee and Mr. Spence and I can get together.
Work out the details.
Get the details.
Gotcha.
And that way, we don't have to address all that here in the court meeting, we won't the next time.
'Cause we do, if we tear it down, we do need to.
I know it, but you know.
We'll be glad to meet with Mr. Spence.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
You wanna close that public hearing and do we need to take action on that?
Do you guys, do you guys wanna go ahead? Mr. Spence, if you'll hang on just a second, you guys wanna go ahead and take action to put this off, formally put this off to September? That way we can notify. That's what we wanna do. Mr. Spence, the meeting will be the first meeting, the first planning commission meeting in September.
Okay.
That's when they'll be reviewed again. And your presence will be required at that time, okay? So we're giving you notice here, so that we don't have to try to hunt you down or drag you down. We're giving you notice now.
I have no problem, finally, if I still be on this side.
I like that.
We need to close, we need to close that public hearing.
Yeah, we close that public hearing.
Okay, so we need to take action on that.
Yeah, Jared made the motion.
Second, got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Motion carries.
Next item is the District Two nuisance property, Dr. Charles Brown, 1145 Old Fanning Road. This time we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if anyone's here to speak on the Charles Brown nuisance property hearing. We'll let Renee go through the photos.
These pictures were taken in April of this year. We've received multiple calls from residents in the Regatta subdivision in regard to this tall grass and weeds that actually grows over the fence into their backyards. They've reported snake and rodent problems. Dr. Brown is required to maintain this area in accordance with his approved site plan that's on file with the county. Right now, this is a view from somebody's backyard.
Oh, that's it on the other side of the fence?
Mm-hmm. And this is what it looks like here. Well, now, these are the new pictures right here. These were taken yesterday. Some of the grass has been cut, but not along the fence area there by the subdivision. And all those shrubs down. He also needs to make repairs to the fence and then there's some dead shrubs that should be replaced as well, but these are new pictures that are taken, have been taken.
Is Dr. Brown here or anyone on behalf of Dr. Brown?
Now, Dr. Brown did receive the mail and he signed for the certified letters, but we've not heard from him.
So this is his, this is his fence? I take it?
It's the fence between Dr. Brown and the subdivision, but when the bowling alley and everything went in on that site plan, Mr. Brown, you know, that was part of the requirements, that he would maintain that area there.
Gotcha, okay.
This lady is actually one of the neighbors and I explained to her that unless somebody was here, that you guys would be prepared to take action right at this, may not be necessary for her to speak.
Okay.
I'm good. It's just that since 2006, we came, we being the Regatta Homeowners Association. Thank you. I'm Barbara Holder, 133 Regatta Drive.
Thank you.
And Dr. Brown's property abuts ours on Regatta Drive. At, I think it was her second meeting in September of 2006, Dr. Brown had intentions of running asphalt up to the property line. Board of Directors came and addressed the issues with you guys and he was instructed at that time to build a berm, put an eight-foot fence on top of it, plant trees, and keep it maintained. And he did build the berm, put the fence on it, he planted some trees, but unfortunately, it was in the summertime and they didn't get enough water. So most of those trees have died. But our complaint at this time is that we have rats, we have snakes, we have turtles, and we have children in the neighborhood that really can't get out in their own backyards to play. Now, I have been keeping the area between my property and his cleared by getting out with a pair of clipping shears, and I do that twice a year. My nephew came up from Florida last year and sprayed it. That helped some. And on Dr. Brown's behalf, I will say that he did clear the area from Old Fanning Road up to behind my house. But then the house next door to mine has extended their fence up to Dr. Brown's fence and did this probably six or seven years ago. So now it's difficult for Dr. Brown to get around to the other side and clear that area.
So that would be a tough situation for him to be able to access his own area, then?
There, it is, it is, but it can be done because he has gotten a tractor back there.
Okay.
There's a 15-foot.
Buffer zone.
Buffer zone.
Okay.
Uh-huh. And he has gotten a tractor back there within the last week or two and cleared one lot.
Okay, all right. Length of that, Renee, on, as far as, that he needs to, it's hard to really imagine what.
I have the Regatta subdivision plan here, the plot layout, that I can show you if you like.
Okay.
It begins here and goes through the seventh lot, which is 141 Regatta.
Okay.
This gentleman extended his fence up to Dr. Brown.
Gotcha.
Now, he has come through here and cleared this.
But he has not all the way through there.
He has not cleared this.
Okay.
And this is a yes.
Okay.
Are there some big trees back there, baby?
What?
Are there some big trees back there?
There are a few batch here, but not on his property. There's one on this lot, but that is, I don't believe that it's his property.
Looks like some smaller rubbish and stuff's wrong, given the problem.
Yeah, it's shrubs.
Right.
Just wild growth, undergrowth. And it's difficult to bush hog.
Right.
Because there's a slope there.
Right. So he's cleared.
I'm trying to be compassionate with him and I've talked to him on several occasions.
So he's cleared about half, but he's, he needs to finish out all the way. Gotcha, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming forward. All right, Craig, I think, I don't see any more questions. You wanna close the public hearing?
Anyone else speak on that? We'll close that public hearing. Be appropriate to take action.
Pleasure, the board.
I'd make a motion that would give him X number of days, 'cause he uses an excuse about it raining every day. And I have a few dry days, he can get back there and do that.
So what do you say, 30 days?
30 days, maybe?
Yeah.
30 days.
Okay. So, all right, motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Bishop. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is number five, the James Lewis. Two Cedar Street. This time we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if Mr. Lewis or anyone on his behalf is here to speak on the nuisance hearing matter for District Three property, 282 Cedar Street, N1. Okay. We'll let Renee go through the photos.
Okay, these pictures were taken in March of this year. We received a complaint in regard to rubbish and debris, inoperable vehicles. We sent the certified mail. It was received. Mr. Lewis contacted the office. He said that he would clean up and remove the vehicle. And new pictures, these pictures were taken yesterday. There has been a good bit of improvement. I think that there's still a little bit more that he needs to do there. But he has made some progress.
Okay. We can close the public.
Yeah, we'll close that public hearing.
With, it looks like he has made some significant improvement, but you said you have been in contact with him?
He did contact the office once.
All right. I'm gonna make a motion that we give him 30 more days with the, with the dry weather, give him 30 more days and then have him report back on August the first. Make that motion.
How many days he had, okay, go ahead, I'm just curious.
We're seeing, we're in March, so it's about five months, four months.
It hasn't been just super wet in the last few weeks.
That's true.
I've cut my yard every week.
But it's definitely.
You made the motion, I second it.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Morrison. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Motion carries.
This time we'll open the public hearing on the Robert Smith nuisance property, 1262 Greenfield Circle, another District Three property. I'll ask this time if Mr. Smith or anyone on his behalf is here to speak. Mr. President, I don't see anyone here. We'll let Renee go through the photos.
All right, we received a complaint in April in regard to inoperable vehicles being stored on the property. These pictures were taken April 9th. That tags, the inspection sticker went out in December of '03 on that vehicle. That was the '03 tag. Mr. Smith did receive the mail and he came by the office and spoke with Dwayne. He said he would start work to get them removed. However, as of today, they're still there, I mean, yesterday, they were still there on the property. Now, Mr. Smith did come this morning earlier and they couldn't stay till the meeting, they had to leave, but they spoke with Dwayne and they're gonna work on getting that done and finished, completed. So we'd like to finish, we'd like to work with them, if that's okay with y'all, give them a little additional time.
Okay. You think 30 days will get that one?
Yes.
Okay. You feel good about that, Dwayne? Good. Close the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
We'll close that public hearing. Make a motion to give Mr. Smith an additional 30 days.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Motion carries. Anything else on new considerations?
That was it.
All right, site plan, architectural review?
We didn't have anything.
Yes, sir.
I received a letter on nuisance, I received a letter on nuisance property and I'm not sure I was the first one called, was it, was Stephen Summers?
You were removed. You had taken care of the issues there, so we removed you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you working with us.
Thank you. Thank you for getting the job done.
You make our job much easier.
You're welcome.
All right, no site plan, architectural review. Next meeting held on Thursday, July 31st, 9:00 a.m. Have a motion recessed?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we will reconvene from recessed meeting of Rankin County Board of Supervisors. At this time, we have Dr. Jim Anderson briefing discussion from the multipurpose pavilion committee. Good morning, Dr. Anderson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
You're doing okay this morning?
Good. a report. At the April Board of Supervisors meeting, this room was packed with many concerned citizens that were. Available for its original use as an agricultural facility, available to host educational recreational activities for livestock-oriented families within the county. At that meeting, on your recommendation, the committee was put together to look into best use and management of the facility. I was on the original committee in 1996 that helped design and build that facility and I was asked to chair the committee and today, I'm here to make our report to you, the board. Our report today is gonna be confined to our efforts in the following areas. One was the physical facility and second, the management of the facility. Under physical facility, there's, were maintenance and building issues and groundkeeping, safety issues and needed changes and improvements. Under management, there were staffing, present use of the facility, enhancement of booking, name branding of the building, budgeting fees and expenses, and volunteers. At first, we met with Mr. Stringer at the facility to evaluate the appearance and the maintenance, safety concerns, and discuss the present and past management. Walked through all corners of the building and we documented the maintenance issues, with some of those being safety issues. We met with Trish Grantham and got a feel for her management skills and her needs and desires for the facility. Over the next two months, we analyzed the past and present events that had been scheduled in the facility. Discuss what could be done to enhance the use and efficiency of the building. We were charged with making this facility more profitable and better managed without adding to the budget. And gentlemen, we took this very seriously and I think we have some recommendations that will grow the bookings and the income of the facility and make it a little easier for Mr. Stringer. Attractive and it was built to provide years of enjoyment and service for the residents of Rankin County. I've seen other similar facilities throughout the state and ours compares very highly in function and design to those. There are obviously neglected maintenance issues of sheet rock, lack of painting, leaks in the plumbing. These are minor in nature and can be repaired by the maintenance and repair crews if you so instruct them to do so. The electrical issues presented the most obvious risk to the patrons of the facility and many of these have already been repaired. There were some covers left, missing from some of the RV hookups and things like that that had been ordered and placed, you know, in their repaired state. The parking lot is well-placed, safe and adequate for most functions that would book this facility. As the management improves and more events are booked, we may later want to expand RV and camper hookups as they are, appear to be a profitable area for growth for the facility. And the fees, you can see where RV hookups are there and they're almost always booked at these big shows. We discussed the perimeter of the property and recommended a security fence when the budget allows with gates to control access to the events, both inside and outside. We do not want livestock walking down the proposed walking track and it was our recommendation that we share the expense with the city who will mutually benefit from the. Is aware of the maintenance issues. We've been through those together. We've walked around and looked at them. We documented those and he sees the need to bring these areas back to condition. There were no glaring areas that needed to be, to make immediate change in the design or the use of the facility. Most recommendations have been made in the management. Require only labor and setup for the different events that are held there. A lot of discussion was made about the dirt and the preparation of the ground. Our conclusion on this topic was that each type of event could have different requirements in the management, should do their best to meet the needs and expectations of those that are renting the facility. It was agreed that disking. An ongoing need and it's not something you do once. It has to be done regularly and properly to have a good outcome that meets the expectations of those that rent it. Very little preparation had been done in the past before events and that's, that's the management issue again. Very little. Set up to return, make return alleys and livestock holding areas and positioning of chutes were common recommendations. All of these require only labor to reposition before some events. Placing security photo cells on the security lighting so they go off when the daylight comes. That and sequence cycling of the. That and sequence cycling of the power- Requirement where you come in and just start turning all the breakers on. It has a surge and then you get charged a higher rate when it's above that limit. Set hours of operation and appointment use would reduce the expenses, this expensive portion of the budget. But just, it wouldn't be left on when no one's there. It would be put on when in use. The- Supervisors and of other facilities as to their staff, fees, event booking, facilities, and promotion of their facility. Most of these facilities that we talked to in Canton, Forest, Hattiesburg, and Meridian had a full-time manager that oversees, oversees a staff of three part-time employees. Makes decisions necessary to keep the facility fully operational and functioning. One common thread that we found with our discussions with all of these managers is none of them are making a profit. One, once, one person said it was never intended to show a profit and, but some are hardly used and others are rented fifty weeks a year. So, it has a lot to do with the management there. Our goal is to improve the bottom line and maintain a reasonable budget to keep the facility open. We currently have one part-time manager and prisoners that maintain the grounds and keep it clean and presentable. We are recommending that we hire a full-time manager to advocate for the facility, enhance the bookings, help reduce the load on our part-time manager, and have an open line of communication with the public and the board of supervisors. Mr. Stringer suggested a department director position for the full-time manager and we agree with him. Pay him well, he or she, and let them take the headaches and the load off the board. The right person can grow the use and income of this facility and pay their own salary. Based on what we saw at other facilities, you can- And we would still be at half the budget of the other facilities in the state. We have presented job descriptions and have requested resumes for prospective manager leaders. You will make the hiring decision and we would just offer our assistance to help you interview these people and make sure we get the right person with the skills needed for the job. Can get booking for a variety of events and keep this facility generating a buzz in the community. A clean, well-managed facility in this central location should be more convenient and booked more frequently than anywhere else in the state. Our close proximity of Jackson, we get overflow from their, their shows there. People come and rent our stalls, exercise their horses. Events, as you can see on our calendar there, that are in our facility already booked. And that should just get better. Another important piece of the puzzle is the name branding and recognition of the facility. There's a page in that book that I gave you that presently has five or six different names that we refer to this facility. Some of- We would prefer to call it with an agriculture-related name. However, it is more important to stick with one name and promote it daily. Volunteers have little cost and usually get energized participants that really care about the task at hand. Our committee is an example of what you can get from volunteers. We are willing to stay on as a volunteer advisory board to help in the policy decisions, hiring of the manager, enhancing the booking, soliciting more help for special events, et cetera, if you so desire. I included an organizational chart to show you what we had in mind for the volunteer help. It won't just be us, it'll be others. If we, if we can, you know, get approval from y'all, we'll organize some more help and get, you know, those facilities a little better managed. And I, and I'm gonna speak for the advisory committee when I say thank you for allowing us to put in our input into this important facility's use and management. It's important to a lot of city and rural people and families in this county and we wanna see it open for a long time to come. Some of the information that's in there, some of the pictures we can give to our website person for the county, that, that can be in there all the time. And the right person in there can work with that group that does the website and we can promote this building and keep it busy. Return, but a little bit cost to the return we give. If you will, I would like to ask you to inform us, if you would, so we can come back when you vote. I know you're probably not gonna do that today, but if you do, let us come back. If you have any questions, I'll answer them now and we will come back and answer them later if you need to.
So, is the committee suggesting that in the future, everyone would have to pay to use the facility?
Not everyone, no. There are some exceptions to that. Anything to do with school, we've had just about what we've had before. The Rankin County Riding Club fundraiser or things like that. School or, or special events groups that have already been exempted.
What, I'm just talking about like individuals being able to go down there at any time?
Yeah. It can, it's open during a special, special time that, that can be used for warm-up a horse. There's an hourly rate on there. And unless some, unless y'all decide what you want differently, then we think we need to charge for it when it's used. There's a discount for non-residents, I mean, for residents over non-resident use. There's also a nonprofit discount to help, help y'all handle that. They hand you a 501(c)(3) certificate and show that you're a nonprofit, then we'll give them a 10% discount.
You think that would go over okay with the people to go out there and use the facility now?
I, I think, yes.
I think the question's been misunderstood. I believe he's asking, I'm sorry. I think he's asking, is the building gonna be used as it is today where people can go and ride daily at no charge? Just come and go as they please.
That's what I said. If, if, the ones that are, that are using the facility now, the county residents can go and ride and unless y'all change it, that is gonna stay pretty much the way it is. The only thing we have changed is the fee structure, or we recommend a change.
Yeah.
To make it a little more profitable.
Right.
But also, thank you.
But you think that would be okay with people who go over using it now, they'll have to start paying?
Well, no, not everybody, but everybody that's been using it for a, a public show or, or event, yes, has been paying for it.
Oh, okay.
But the, the people that are riding on it just for recreational, they're not being charged, no.
But you think they'll be fine with being charged going forward?
I don't think so. I'm not saying we're recommending that.
Oh, okay.
No, we're not. We're, we want the folks that have normally been paying for a, an event to pay.
Gotcha.
The residents that go out there on the implement weather to exercise their horses because they can't at home, I don't think we need to charge them.
Aye.
Now, that, that part's not gonna change.
Okay.
And the only thing we're doing is recommending a little bit, a little different fee structure.
How do we?
But not for that.
And, and I guess to kinda go along with what Jay was saying, how do we, if they, just say for instance, they come in from Alabama, they just stop in. How do we, the only way to stop something like that, I guess, would be a full-time person sitting out there so we wouldn't charge them? Is that what you're?
Well, somebody from outer state's a different person.
Right. I mean, if anyone just stops in. Because they do right now.
They, that's right. There is no fence. There's no gate.
Right.
There's no security.
Right.
And they can ride up and get out and unload their horse before anybody even knows they're there.
Right.
During certain hours. And that's, that's part of the safety concern that we had, that we wanted that fence put up to control access to it for legal reasons and for that reason you're saying.
So, we would make sure that they would be Rankin Countyans?
Well, no, we don't mind them coming. Use or for the use of the facility while they're there. And that's why there's an hourly rate.
Right. But what you're recommending though is Rankin Countyans basically be not charged.
Do it by schedule.
Gotcha.
And not charged, yeah.
Gotcha.
They can call Trish or our manager who you hire to come open the gate or have it open with the lights on and use the facility and, and do it on a scheduled basis. A couple of days or a couple of nights a week, it's always open so they know when to come and they can go.
Gotcha.
That's all, that's all management issues. That's not something that we're gonna make any recommendations for.
Right.
They just do what we've been doing pretty much at, at a fee. But for that Rankin County resident, can still come and use it, still come and ride it just like they always have.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I wanna add one thing. On the packet that you have, the list of rates, you may have seen where you can rent it just for a few hours.
Yeah.
What that's in reference to is if y'all already had that on your rate card prior to being a part of this. That means that if you wanna rent our building exclusively for, you know, an hourly rate, you want to just rent it for four hours, not the whole day. That's what that rate is if you're, it's already in your rate.
Yeah, this is, this is a copy of the old rates if y'all want that.
Then that means it's been for you.
Yeah, we just, we make this suggestion.
Okay. Thank you.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna, not set the average card, we just wanna make sure it's used properly and that you capture the, the value there.
So, basically, y'all are recommending for us to change our rate structure a little bit and have it where we can schedule people to go or we can save electricity some?
Well, that's, that keeps the cost down. Have a full-time person that is responsible for answering the phone, getting the people to book the property with any kind of event, not just livestock.
Yeah.
That building can be used for a lot of things. And have somebody there that, that's their job is to make sure that thing stays busy, that it's clean and properly presented, that we wanna give a good image to the state, that we have a good facility. Management there.
And what the sheriff's offered is, is, you know, will help that as far as keeping it presentable.
Right. I didn't, I purposely didn't mention the- Consideration for this consideration. We actually looked at that first and Brian has volunteered, I guess, to take this position, which is, is a good thing for security for the fee structure plus hours. And who better to be opening gates and closing gates and making sure it's safe than the sheriff's office? They've got cars driving around all the time, so I thought it was a good win for all of us.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
For six and a half years, I've been asking for a sign to be put up on the interstate.
Yes, sir.
Identifying this facility.
Think that's something we need to do.
I, I think that with the mayor's help of Brandon, I think that's probably a, coming, gonna come to fruition, I believe, with his vision on that.
I'm really glad that he has that vision, that stimulated a lot of this conversation. And I'm really pleased to be able to work with him and get this all cleaned up down the interstate. It'll be something to really promote and see. And the visibility will make it a lot more easy to see from the highway and get in there.
Right.
For the facility to be used more efficiently.
Any more questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
Robert Sutton, I'm the local IBHA district director. I know a number of bookings is a big issue. My name's Robert Sutton. I'm the local National Barrel Horse Association District Director. We've been booking this facility ten to twelve times a year. And I just wanted to be known that we are, when Trish gets back in the morgue, booking an additional five to six shows for the remainder of 2014. And for 2015, we'll be increasing the shows from ten to twelve to twenty to twenty-four.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. But it's, it's, it's in y'all's hands, guys, and it's, it's something that can be done without a lot of money spent. And I feel like that person that we picked is the right person this time. What he brings in.
Right.
I do.
So, y'all, it doesn't, it sounds like y'all are resigning. I mean, this is gonna be an ongoing committee, right? I mean, you're on hold for life.
This is for life. As long as I'm alive, I'll be involved some way. But this is, this is our recommendation to keep the advisory board on and if you want us to. And we're not, we have no power. We don't want any, we don't wanna make the real hard decision. Y'all to get the right folks and get it done.
Have you advertised for the position yet?
We have. Actually, we have not advertised. There was a article in the paper by the Rankin County News expressing the need for a person prior to Brian doing the fee position. But we have, there's two job descriptions in this envelope. Called and asked for information and we will present those to, to you or Hoopie and get that information out. Hopefully, you know, that, one of those three or somebody else would be the right person for it. But I think there's, there's plenty of interest, you know, and you want me to fill this room up with- With that support this time is, is necessary. But there are a lot of folks that really, and you've gotten the phone calls, you know, that the facility's important to a lot of folks.
All right. I wanna say I have served on that committee and they, they have really put a reasonable, strong interest. They really looked at it very- Listened and just observed, but they, they really tried, tried to look at every aspect of it. And, and, you know, they were sincerely wanting this to, to do what's needed to make this happen. So, I will speak up for them as far as the way they handled theirselves and the discussions they had and really researched the best they could. I'm here to present this today, so.
Right. Thank you, David. And I thank both of y'all for serving with us.
Well, we appreciate you guys' time, time and effort putting all into this. I know that it's very, it's been a, it's been a very, from day one, I guess, it's been very, I guess, not to say heated, but at least passionate. You know, passion on both sides and stuff. And I appreciate you guys' efforts and time. For Rankin County and thank you guys for what all you've put, put together on this.
I just, I really just wish we had done this ten years ago.
Yeah.
Would've been a lot better for everybody, but thank you.
I, I agree.
And if you need more input, don't hesitate to call and we wanna be here when you vote again.
All right.
To answer any questions if you need.
We will keep you informed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you like? Okay. Well, you're coming up next anyway, so. Not to put, not to throw you under the bus or anything like that.
Really? Yeah, no.
That come from Mr. Brown. All right. Our next, next on the list would be Mayor Butch Lee for red light at Crossgates Boulevard in Old Brandon. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Appreciate your time this morning.
Yes, sir.
Very important. Not quite sure whose district this falls in, whether it's Jay's or what it's Jay's.
Well.
Borders right on the line or something like that.
Is it Walter Jay?
Or both, just Walt Jay's.
I think it probably impacts the people that live in both districts.
Yes.
Specifically. Specifically, though, this is the end of Crossgates Boulevard, Burnham. This problem was highlighted last spring, really brought to my attention as I began to sit there one morning watching vehicles come into Brandon. And as I went up Burnham Road outside the city limits of Brandon, what I discovered were, was that people were coming down 25 and actually cutting through, coming over to Luckney Road, over to Henderson Road, which you did a wonderful job on redoing Henderson Road, coming down Henderson Road and coming down El Dorado Road. And what they're trying to do is, this is people that live outside the city and outside of Flowood, but trying to get to work in Jackson. So, rather than fighting the traffic of going in 25, they'll cut through and it's created a nightmare. Pearls are too, because Mayor, I've had these conversations with Mayor Ron. It's just a nightmare at that particular intersection. Traffic count numbers have grown from seven to almost 12,000 vehicles a day at a three-way stop. So, we put in a three-way stop and it made everybody mad, but we had to slow it down and get control of that traffic as it traverses through Brandon. Wasn't any other way to do that. So, we, and we finished last year by putting- Every morning and every evening. And we're gonna have to do that again. So, our goal is to try to put a, what I'll call a temporary light up to control traffic closure in peak hours. You've got information I provided to administrator, which I'm assuming you have a copy of. You've got information I provided to the administrator, which I'm assuming you have a copy of, as to the cost of that. We went ahead and did the engineering on that to derive a number. That is where East Metro will come through. So one day, there will be additional right-of-way purchase there and a nice signal put up. And we're probably actually need a couple more at that point in time. You know, we're all in prayer that that's gonna happen in the next two or three years. But our problem is immediate, right now. Black and white officer there for basically two hours every morning, two hours every evening. Those problems on that side of town, kind of interesting to see how people respond to this. People on this side of town have been fighting the 471 nightmare for many, many years coming through that three-way stop, four-way stop there at Value Road. So I'm asking if there is any hope or ray of sunshine here on helping us fund that figure that have any conversations or observations on my request to the county for funding support?
No.
No. Not whatsoever. I've, in fact, I was over there twice this week and I understand exactly the, if you hadn't got that stop signs up there, I mean, I would have been sitting there for a good 15, 20 minutes.
The first complaint came from senior citizens that were trying to get home. They would come to the end of Crossgates Boulevard and traffic was just zipping by. And it was a nightmare. Plus, we've got some curb and gutter stuff we've got to take care of in front of that gas. Until I went to Henderson Road and watched vehicle after vehicle after vehicle coming into the city from outside the city. And then I went through Luckney Road and it's just a steady stream of traffic. And it's only gonna get worse, it's not gonna get better. There's not any quick solution for 25. So people are gonna continue to use us to navigate around and get to work in Jackson and vice versa in the evening coming home. Same problems exist on El Dorado Road. You know, you got a four-way stop there and it's just, we've got bottlenecks that hopefully our, the state will help us work through in the future. But until then, we've got a safety issue.
Right.
At those peak hours.
And then you combine that with a fender bender on either, either way. On El Dorado or Crossgates Boulevard and it just
Shuts it down.
It's horrible.
And we won't even go into Highway 80 whenever we get a fender bender like yesterday.
All right. Are there questions, observations?
Is this project that you sought other funding from NPO or any other
It, it's gonna have to be local only and we kept, you know, intentionally kept the signal, I define temporary as one, two, or three years. You know, you have to define, but it's, it's a real traffic concern. And for us, it's a public safety concern enough to where we have to put a uniform officer out there directing traffic. There's no other way around it. It's that bad of a problem.
So in your estimate here, what's, what's the total cost you're asking from the county?
It's just under 50, it's 48. So my thinking was, you could meet us halfway.
Right.
We'll do, we've already paid for the engineering.
Right.
And got that ready to go. I received that last week. Engineering, the whole engineering report if you'd like. There is no right-of-way purchase and turn lanes and that kind of thing. It's using what's there on the ground. And so we're just asking for, you look at it one of two ways, either $25,000 or half of what we spend on it. We're gonna try to locate some used signal material to use, you know, that's reliable. So we're gonna try to minimize costs as much as possible. So either way you want to go. Enter into with the county as to the cost of this is what we're asking for.
Okay, do we need to act on this today or we need to wait till Monday?
Fine to act on it today, if you'd like. I would suggest to avoid an interlocal law. Looking at Mr. Baker to make sure I'm going straight now here. It may be easier if we just select an amount.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed?
So that we don't need to worry with an interlocal. It just do a not to exceed amount.
Okay.
Well, what would that be, this 48?
20. You saying up to 25?
This high? Well, based on this, it's 48, so we stay, say 25. Just say 50, say 25.
Okay, I'll make that motion that we, from the county.
Mayor, is it okay? I apologize.
Yes.
I want to just clarify something. Is it, is it acceptable that it be done by way of reimbursement?
Yes.
Y'all looking for the funds?
Up front.
Okay, so in your motion, let's make it not to exceed $25,000 upon presentation of an invoice for the calls to the front.
Is, why is there not available funding out there somewhere for the, to cover this one? What, what makes this one different than other signalizations we've done?
This is strictly local government. There's no state, that's not a state highway. And I thought it was, I thought, I thought State Highway 18 came all the way up to the end of that Boulevard. After researching with the state, Highway 18 ends at the middle of the interstate. So Crossgates Boulevard crossing 80 is a city street. It's not a state, not invited at all, except at the intersection and signalization.
Whenever East Metro continues on this
Yeah, debate. Absolutely, we're gonna make that argument because ultimately in time, we want 18 to be four-lane all the way down South Park, Brandon. And that was the original concept when Congressman Montgomery went up there and did all that, so.
Yeah, the East Metro, I mean, that was part of the selling features, was it was a connector road as it, as they were defined at that time.
That's when the Board of Supervisors at that time bought the right-of-way. So the right-of-way already exists on 18 to make that a four-lane bridge over the railroad tracks and that type of thing. But, you know, that, that would be, first and foremost, we gotta get East Metro up and running. It's critical to north-south in Rankin County.
Both ways, that's right.
Both ways.
Well, I just, I mean, because this says option of cost instead of cost.
Well, options were Steel Post versus Chris Oak. And, you know, I told them, no, we're going as least expensive as possible so that we can hurry up and get it done. It also gives us flexibility to get two quotes and go under 50. If we got over 50 with, you know, a nice mast on the signal project, well, then we're getting up in the two or $300,000 range. And that, you know, it's hard to justify spending that kind of money, but same time, it's hard for me to justify putting a uniform officer out there twice a day.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Right.
I need him elsewhere.
I was, I was just curious because most of our signalizations, we don't do a lot of them our own, ourselves, so.
On, that you helped the city with on 471 North five years ago at East Deer Ridge to get in the cornerstone. I believe that was around 85 or 89. Total cost of that. And, you know, we split that across city and county. But I believe it was, but you were stretching the highway and having to meet MDOT requirements. So we're not limited by that.
Right.
Into consideration on that too as well, that was gonna be the signalization they had in eventually if they four-lane, 471 North, right?
Yes, and I got up in front of town hall meeting here because of what MDOT shared with me, that that project, if the utilities are relocated, would be left for construction in this year, November of this year. So I'm fast and furious on getting all utilities done.
You were down to
We're halfway there.
Well, they hadn't even bought all the right-of-way, have they?
Yes, all the right-of-way is purchased through the city limits. Now, the right-of-way from the city limits to 25 has, nothing has been done.
That's phase two, isn't it?
That's phase, well, that's right, that is phase two.
Does that get you to Grand Prairie Road?
Yes, that's through Grand Prairie Road.
Have they just recently bought the right-of-way?
At Grand Prairie?
No, the complete, all the way through there.
I think it was completed last year. Now, there might have been a couple of nuances or I think there's a legality question of, you know, having given us enough settled and resolved. So the project's on go and it's very close to fruition, which is a big thing for the county seat, getting people in and out of the county.
Mr. Mayor, I want to insert one thing. You talk about the cost of the lights.
Yes, sir.
You need to think about those police officers that had to get out in that intersection. And that lady's on the cell phone, next thing you know, he's up in there. So I'm
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You want to finish your motion, Mr. President?
Sure, I liked our attorney's motion and his, not his motion, but his suggestion of the motion, so.
It would be a participate
Right.
of 50% of the cost of the budget, not to exceed 25,000 upon presentation of the documentation that would be required for reimbursement.
Right, I'll make that motion. Motion by myself, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, appreciate you. Alrighty. This time we have Mr. Craig Slade, Board Attorney, for the discussion of political sign ordinance.
Mr. President, we're just circling back around from an earlier discussion about the possibility that we would look at adopting a political sign ordinance. This obviously applies to temporary that, that one, one of the issues that we wanted to make sure we were clear about was that we have an area of the county, Mr. Woods District, the Reservoir Community District, that already has regulations that apply up there. And so what we did not want to do was create a conflict in these proposed regulations that would jeopardize or create confusion about the Reservoir Community District. So that, that is something that we addressed in the ordinance and we segregated out as a board community district so that if there is any conflict, what applies in the Reservoir Community District takes precedence over this ordinance and those regulations can continue to be enforced as is. All right, so that takes care of the platted subdivisions up around the reservoir, which already do that. Again, just as a quick reminder, the salient points of this proposed ordinance are that number one, we recognize that there are significant constitutional rights afforded to political the board has to make a finding in its ordinance that there are compelling public health, safety, and welfare issues that need to be addressed through this ordinance. That finding is set out in here. Political signage is authorized on the front end and then there are regulations that go with it. Those regulations are a size restriction, 18 square feet is that's the equivalent of a four and a half by four and a half, half a sheet of plywood. If, if that helps to envision what we're talking about would be the maximum space. What's excluded is any billboard. So if there's an existing permitted billboard and some, and a candidate uses that, that is not covered by the ordinance as long as it's a permitted existing billboard. All right, so.
So can we grandfather in some, like if you already purchased some of those bigger ones?
Well, uh
I'm not joking.
No, they're acceptable, right? Billboards are acceptable, right?
A permitted billboard. And then that is exempt from this regulation. There is no, we're not gonna put a size restriction on a billboard sign. It would look ridiculous to have a four and a half have to squeeze down to a four and a half by four and a half on a billboard. So if that makes sense, if it's a billboard.
What was that dimension again?
And where's this ordinance?
18 square feet, four and a half by four and a half, so.
Have you got a, you got a copy of what you're going over right now?
Yes, I did, I do, y'all.
Do we have a copy of this?
I don't know that you guys we did.
A four, a four by four?
We're not
I said four and a half by four and a half would get you to the 18. I think that's right.
Most of them are four by four anyway.
Check me on that math, but four by four is, at least a four by four
Right.
would be, would be authorized. Okay? All right? That's the first thing. And I'm not hung up on these size or dimensional requirements at all.
Let's quit talking about it.
All right, what about the small ones?
Yeah, Jared, let me walk through that.
Work your way down, okay.
It's covered, yes, sir, it's covered. We have a requirement that put out unless you're within 45 days prior to the election that it applies to.
But you couldn't tell somebody in their private yard or private property, could you?
Well, certain of these restrictions apply regardless of how it's described here. So if they, if they display the sign in the county 65 days prior to the
On their private property?
Yes, that is correct.
Same way, same way
I thought that had been contested once before, though. And you couldn't tell them they couldn't put it in their own yard.
Yes, sir. You can regulate, you can, you can enact reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on even political speech, but you have, better have a really good reason to do so. And I would anticipate that this is gonna be similar to what we do with our nuisance regulations. And that is that it's, it's not something that's, we drive around and try to police. Issues that are perceived to be big issues. And that is a display of political advertisements here on county property.
Right.
That's a problem. And the placement of these signs in the public right-of-way, that's an issue. That's, that's a situation, Jared, where
Oh, I understand that.
Nobody's been approached about whether or not that sign can be placed there because it's not private property. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So those two examples right there would be primary examples of regulation that I think would be appropriate. The signs can just simply be removed. So the enforcement of the ordinance is through the, and I'm sure the sheriff appreciates this, the Sheriff's Department, through Community Development Office, and through your road department. So if the guys are out and they see the signs on right-of-way, they can simply be removed. The, the ordinance, the proposed it prohibits in addition to the public right-of-way, placement on public right-of-way, it prohibits obviously county-owned property, county-owned or controlled property, utility poles, traffic signs, or devices.
Utility poles that are on county property?
County property, stop signs.
Is that just count political signs?
Yes, sir, this is only applicable to political signs.
Graffiti up and down, some of them.
Yes, sir.
Garage there.
What we say, this is to Jared's question about the size of the, of signs that are placed on private property. Jared, only as to platted subdivisions in the county. That's important. Platted subdivisions in the county. The size restrict standard sign width and height, the standard yard sign that you guys were all familiar with, that I think measures
18 by
18 by 24, something like that, yeah. That, that is clearly within the five-square-foot deal, so two and a half feet.
And that's an implied subdivision.
That's only implied subdivision.
Right.
So if somebody on private property out of the county, not a platted subdivision, wants to put a sign up that's four by four, have that.
Right.
Okay, so only platted subdivisions and that sign restrict, that, that size restriction applies in the platted subdivision.
Wouldn't that be up to the platted subdivisions' covenants?
Yes, we don't regulate and the issue of platted subdivisions and we have an exception, I'm sorry, we don't regulate the issue of restrictive covenants. And I have a section that I've introduced here, Walter, that says nothing within this ordinance is to be interpreted as authorizing any person to place or cause to be placed a campaign sign on private property without the express permission of the property owner.
Certainly.
And then we say that nothing, I gotta find it, give me a second here.
I doubt it'd stay long if he didn't give you permission.
That's right. Give me two seconds here, I've got it. Nothing contained in this ordinance shall be construed as allowing political signs and platted subdivisions having recorded restrictive covenants that prohibit such signage. So if the subdivision has a restrictive covenant that says no, then nothing about this would give someone permission to violate those covenants. The covenants apply. All right? So we tried to, we tried to cover that.
Craig, I just thought of something. We only have ditch, back of ditch, back of ditch, that's the only thing we have.
That's right.
The light poles are, are on the off The light poles are on the off side anyway, so that doesn't matter anyway. That won't be on county property.
Yeah, technically, Jared, it would be off of the property. However, we just simply say that you're not allowed to post those on utility poles. So it doesn't matter where the pole is. It's on the pole, your road department guys can take it down. Alright?
Greg, if they take a sign down, they do like to stake it in bounds.
That's what them got, Doug. I'm sure you've been over there and seen the dug through there, and it'd be, my goodness, it'd be every sign you can imagine out there.
The way we, this is, this is a good point. Your ordinance doesn't address the specifics of the enforcement, how that's carried out. It authorizes those who are, who have enforcement authority to remove the sign without any notice. But we will leave it in the hands of our very capable sheriff to determine what happens with them at that point. Yep, Larry Swale's office will be one of the locations that, repository.
Okay, we discussed this enough.
Is, you know, there's further discussion. Is there, is there any sort of direction that you guys?
Amen.
I got you.
I second that.
I'm with you.
There, watch out, might be an ordinance.
That's right, I'm with you.
Biggest thing is the timeline. I like, I mean, there's no need to put them out three months ahead of the election. I like the idea.
That's a great, that's a great example. When they were qualifying to run for a constable, they called me to verify what our ordinance read, because Brandon's was 45 days before the election. Peeler Hatches was 60 days before the election.
Oh, really?
And they didn't know what the, of course, we didn't have one in the county restricting. So, uh, being honest, they can all be the same, but, you know.
I didn't know, I thought most of them were 45. I really, I didn't know that was a 60-day. The ones I'm familiar with were 45. But Peeler Hatches 60.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Peeler Hatches 60 days before the election.
Should know that, but I don't.
I don't have to contend with that other than my district.
You fixing to. You gonna, you gonna, you going to.
No, I don't get no city.
This one, you know, we talked about it the other day about the violation of the ordinance, $1,000, you know.
Up to.
Up to. Yeah, and that's.
They're going to next page.
Well, and it's, it's kind of concerning to see, you know, you have an opponent or whatever, what's to say that they're not going to play?
Make your campaign.
There you go.
Yeah. And believe me, it'll.
Save a few and stick them up later?
It does, and it will. So how do we, how do we, how do we address that?
Incarcerated up to 90 days, I'm making a motion number 104 to strip. Are you crazy?
The first issue
What you gonna deal with?
That you have is that you're, you're asking, you're asking your county departments, the sheriff, the community development office, and the road department to enforce this by removing the sign. That's number one.
Yeah.
The, I would assume, obviously, this is going to be a justice court matter. It's a misdemeanor offense.
Right.
And so it would, it would move through, the thought process would be, it would move through the justice court system as any other misdemeanor violation. It would be someone who's required to swear out an affidavit. Obviously, your sheriff could do that. There's always going to be that discretion there to, to get to the bottom of what's going on. Who's behind that? If it's obvious that it's, it's trickery, then it's not going to be a justice court.
Basically, that's pretty much.
Your lawbreaker opponent.
Well, you're thinking, you're thinking way out there, aren't you?
Oh, it happens. Yeah. I won't go into specifics, but I can.
Another option, Mr. President, would be to simply allow the enforcement of the ordinance to be by way of removal of the sign, and not have a specific fine set out in the ordinance, not have remove those provisions from the ordinance and simply allow it to be enforced by way of removal. Alright, that's, that eliminates.
Removal of the sign.
Yeah, that means they just leave them all up there, and then we have to go pick them all up.
Yes, sir. Right. So your catch 22 is, is that, you know, the enforcement, obviously, your enforcement is going to be a problem if you don't have penalty provisions.
Right. Unless it reverse the trickery.
Another, another way to address this, if there are misgivings about, you know, the number of days beforehand when they can be put out, or size limitations and other things, then pairing the ordinance back to to look at this, just prohibit it off of county property, and maybe the right of way.
I like that one a lot better so far.
And that takes care of the biggest issues that we see.
Right. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I think that's one of our biggest issues that we do have right now, is on county property, no matter what.
Would that be the pleasure of the Board, maybe just to pair it back to those two primary issues? Sir?
The, the number of days?
The days.
And, uh, right side of county property?
I don't see a problem with the days.
I like that.
45-day deal there. That wouldn't apply to a billboard.
Yes, sir.
No, because I've seen them put the billboards up two months.
We've talked about this before. In fact, I thought we even passed one.
I did too. I thought y'all passed one.
I thought we did pass one on the number of days.
You, you thought so too?
Yeah.
I did too. Off of what?
Political property.
Oh. I mean, I really did. I thought you had had one that said 45 days or something.
Was that during your tenure?
Oh, really?
No, I thought it was yours, because I remember one.
I think a cursory review minutes has been made. Can I say cursory? And, and we didn't find. Right. If, if you guys, if this board passed something, it goes back before '03.
I would've been '06, or.
No. This board would be '07.
Before '08.
'08.
If, if it happened, it happened before '08.
I thought, see, I thought there was one, but obviously you hadn't found it, so it must never was.
As far as I'm concerned, I think pair it back to those two, basically those two.
Okay, I think that's easy. Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
We can do that. We will pair it back and get you guys something to look at. I would suggest let's look at it on the 15th.
Okay.
I thought I'd cram it in Monday.
Thank you. Mr. J.K. Stringer, County Administrator. Oh, well, if I skip him, then we'd have to adjourn. Okay. Mr. Johnny Brady?
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
Sir? I think I should've discussed this with Mr. Mo's purpose center a while ago, but my name is Johnny Brady, and I'm racing. We do go-kart racing, RC racing, that type stuff. I do a lot of charity events throughout the year, 45. I raised $5,000 for a lady that had cancer with a race and different things like that. We recently rented the, the multipurpose center on May 16th and 18th, and my understanding it was a $250 nonprofit, ranking candidate residence. And Trish had mentioned something to me about having to have a nonprofit certificate or something, where you have to go register with the state. It's just a bunch of, you gotta have tax numbers. And beneficial stuff. Well, I brought my payment up here, $750. It was three days, with a letter from the Shriners Hospital. Y'all probably got a copy of that somewhere, that we, it was a nonprofit, all the profits was going straight to them. Well, I get a text, I guess a couple days ago, from your employee, Trish, up at the riding arena, that says that I need to bring the money in here before she turns it over to an attorney. Well, to me, that's a threat. I mean, all you gotta do is ask me to pay. I mean, I've never screwed anybody over, not $1, and I'll never intend to. But it's frustrating to me that she couldn't call me and say, I need you to go pay $750 more for your, for your deal. And this may help the committee or whatever, but the whole time, the entire time that I was at my event, nobody here to build a racetrack. The big fan above it was on it, dried it out, and it sucked for the whole weekend. And it was just, the lady that was in charge of the thing, I called and asked her about coming up there, and she expressed to me that she lived in Puckett and it was a long drive far, so I didn't bother anymore. It was very frustrating. I've rented it several times before, and didn't, haven't, haven't had to, seem to have had a problem. But I couldn't get fans turned off, I couldn't get several things done, and it was just very frustrating. I don't mind paying the other $750 if that's what I need to do. That's, that's more than fine. I mean, that's.
Right.
Shriners Hospital a check anyway, because we told them we were going to. My problem is the, I call it a threat with an attorney. I mean, all somebody had to do is just call and say, hey, I need some more money. And I would've been glad if I'd done that. As a matter of fact, I don't even have a signed contract. So, I mean, I don't guess I even had to pay anything yet, so I choose not to, without a signed contract.
So you didn't fill out any forms or anything to rent the facility?
No, she had sent me one, and I never got back with her to get it to her. And she was out of town on a cruise, or something like that, or whatever. I don't know what's, what was going on. But, you know, I can pay the $750 right now, it's not a problem. My problem is not having anybody at the facility. People riding horses up there the whole time we were doing it in the back arena. Just To me, I mean, I got $3.00. We bare raced for years. You've been up here somewhere, I swear. But the facility is set up more for just horses. And I, don't get mad at it. But it needs to be, if it's going to be a multipurpose center, it needs to be illustrated as a multipurpose center. It's, it seems like you don't get any help when you have events like we have up there, and, which I don't, I do everything myself. I don't ever need a whole lot. But, but I just wanted to express that, and just make everyone aware of it. And, you know, like I said, I'm, I'll do whatever I need to do.
I'm going to get Mr. Stringer, our County Administrator, with you, and we'll get all this cleared up. And, you know, on behalf of the text, we apologize on that. You're right, you know, management, you know, we have had some problems and stuff like that, and I'm not putting our management down or anything like that, but we need to rectify some situations for sure.
And Trish is a friend of mine. I've been knowing her forever. I mean, we've always worked together there. But it just, it irritated me real bad.
And I can understand. Right. Well, Mr. Stringer will be in touch with you if that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your concerns. I appreciate you bringing that forward.
Yes, sir.
Alright. No, that's not the same kind. That's a little, little bit of a motor drove. Mr. Stringer?
Yes, sir.
Got you. You're up on the, I think, A on bond attorney for Bloomfield?
Yes, Mr. President. As you may remember, before my time, y'all did approve the bond bar, bond tilt for quite a while, as, as it's been, as it was being built up. And they're now ready to move forward on that. And so we've had a meeting on it. The attorney, the, the bond attorney that's been involved in this from the start is Lucian Bourgeois, and that's who I recommend that we continue with him on this project. I did call Lucian yesterday, and he's available, and he's willing to do it. So that's the first step in moving forward, is to make sure we get the bond attorney back involved. Then I think that there will be an attempt in the next week to come around and, and give y'all some briefings before we take this up in the formal board meeting, probably on the 15th. So.
Did we select the attorney, or does the, the company that is asking?
It actually come out of the bond proceeds, but the bond attorney will be working for, for us. It'll be So I'm asking for a, a motion to, that we continue and retain Lucian as the bond attorney.
I make that motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. The next item is, the next items are just some information for you to let you know some things we're working on. Don't have any real conclusions on some of them yet, but to let you know that work is in progress. First is on the wireless communications, which you received a brief on. In the meantime, we, we have been back with the Miswin people and discussing with how our system can blend in with their system offered up, in fact, almost said, look, we really want you to use some of our controllers and so forth. The bottom line is, as we work through this, don't have the final figure yet, but as we work through this, it may be some million dollars less than what we were talking about before. So I tell you this, as hopefully by the 15th, or maybe the last meeting of the month, we'll be back with another brief with a better idea of what the cost will be, asking for the authority to move forward to work out a contract with Molarola to do this, and probably get back into the, the issue of do we buy that contract down with the, with the $5 million?
The $5 million we don't have.
Huh?
The $5 million we don't have.
We have the $5 million.
Yeah.
Okay, but, but, you know. Yeah, we, we understand. But I didn't, I didn't want that to be a surprise. Now, the second item is the sirens. We continue to have some issues with sirens throughout the county. It all really started here several months ago, when the controller in the sheriff's office, basically, I'm talking about the computer in the sheriff's office, was struck by lightning, as a result of lightning. We got it fixed, but I'm not so sure that we got all the reprogramming in it done correctly and so forth. For example.
I thought we bought a new one.
Also, but we haven't yet.
We voted to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Man, Carl Stringer?
Yes.
We, we have the new one, and Scott has installed it down in DOC.
Yeah.
We're there.
Yeah.
So it has been installed?
Correct, correct. There'll be two of them. One will be backed up to the other.
Yeah.
So we'll have two locations for where they can set them off.
And, but we did have some issues yesterday, that we had about eight or 10 sirens that didn't go off. And I just want y'all to know, we recognize that. We have about 39 sirens, I think, throughout the county. And it cost about $40,000 for a new siren. Now, we do have.
Now, when you say eight or nine of them didn't go off, was that because of the programming, or was that because of the sirens?
I just don't know.
Okay.
Fairly enough, that we were finding that as we went out and checked them, we had, that the batteries had, had died. Well, what we've done on that one is we now have a system that we're routinely changing out the batteries before they die.
I thought we already had one of those in place.
Well, we didn't until a couple months ago. I don't know if we're supposed to or not.
Yeah, we were supposed to have, for sure.
Okay, but, but we did have started a program that where we're about, changing about a third of the batteries each year. And hopefully that will resolve the problem of having a dead battery. The, so, but what I'm saying is, as we work through this issue, we're working through the issue, and I'm not talking about taking sirens. We do have parts of the county that you just plain can't hear the sirens from.
That's, yeah, because it's such a huge county.
And I think that that may well be this area that we were talking about, Mr. Brown. We may have an area out there, and, that we were looking at yesterday. As a matter of fact, Scott had gone out so he could sit and listen to the siren when it went off, and that's one of the ones that didn't go off. And so.
I don't think it'd been off in two years.
Yeah. And I was out there in that area, and I didn't hear a siren either. So.
If I hadn't said anything on, on that side about not hearing in two years, want to move to the east side of the county, because people like that love hearing tornado sirens.
Yeah, yeah.
If it went off.
Now, yeah, I, I don't. Will, will always be an issue, okay?
It will.
Because you get these number sirens every now and then, you're gonna get one that doesn't work that you think works. For example, you can get things, we test them, uh, throughout the month with the computer, meaning is the signal getting, we can go with the computer and find out, is the signal, uh, getting to the siren? Uh, and, and is this siren receiving the signal? Well, if you've got a really weak battery, you may have enough power there to say, yeah, I've received it, the signal, but not enough power to turn the siren on. And so that's why we're gonna go through the process of periodically systematically replacing the, the batteries.
Well, I had. The other day before they cut them on, before they activate them, and, uh, he specifically called me to tell me that, uh, they did every effort to make sure that they had someone on the ground at each.
Yeah.
And now whether they did or not, I mean, he called me to tell me that, uh, he had, uh, put as many ground troops on each.
Location.
Location.
Going off.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we do, we, uh, he calls the, uh, the fire departments out there, and, uh, and there have been cases to where they call back and say, the siren worked, and the guy living next door to the siren says, no, it doesn't work.
So how?
Okay, so, you know, what, what's going on there? I don't know.
Right.
But for example, the other thing is, is people will call in, and they will say, the siren, uh, for example, this is a real case, at Estrella Heights didn't work. Well, that's where the guy lived. That's not where the siren is. The siren, when you really look at it, is on Dixie Drive. What we're gonna do on that one, what Scott and is gonna do on that one, Bob's doing on that one, we are gonna give these sirens an address through the 911 system. And then we're gonna post on each siren a number of what that siren is, so people at least will know, hopefully, what siren they're talking about.
Right.
Uh, just little things like that. Anything that we can do to ensure that these sirens work when they're needed.
Right.
But if they didn't hear, obviously it didn't go off because Estrella Drive, Dixie, Estrella and Dixie are right there.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, yeah.
Obviously didn't go off.
Yeah, so I.
I hope, I don't know, but several years ago, they identified where these sirens were supposed to go, and who have installed them to decide that wasn't where it needed to go, and so they moved it, blow their up on Three Prom Road. I don't know that that one's been, hadn't went off since it's been there.
Yeah, well, we're going to identify all of. It's a serious issue. I'm not trying to make light of this issue. It's a serious issue. The, uh.
All right, so you got a handle on, uh, getting a, well.
It's a work in progress.
So I need to keep using my weather radio.
Well, that, that's always a solution, that people can have all-weather's radio, except I know I got disgusted at mine a couple of years ago because it kept going off in the middle of the night, and they'd tell me there's a thunderstorm in southwest Arkansas.
I think you, I think you can set them a little more finitely, you know, to maybe your location.
Okay, now, the next item, and the next item is, are the fire stations. There's two things, issues I want to talk here. Is the fire station y'all authorized, or the substation that y'all authorized, uh, last time? We will probably start turning dirt on that within the next couple of weeks. And so that's. With the, uh, county engineer on the groundwork and that type of stuff, but.
We have an actual, what's the actual location of that? Do we have a, I mean, a physical?
Yeah.
Something on shot, is this?
Yes, the one we're talking about, yes.
You know where the old concrete structure is, where that old tower site on the left, that John Shallow split? Right there on the left.
Okay.
Okay. And now also, Mr. Brown has brought up, uh, some questions about maybe doing some, uh, work at the reservoir fire station, and we're gonna be looking at that.
But it's really on the, uh, Boulevard.
The what?
On your Boulevard, in my Boulevard.
Oh, okay, the one down, okay, on Castlewood Boulevard. Okay, all right, good, okay. Now, the other item, and I, I'm glad the sheriff's here, it is possible that by about July the sixteenth, that we could take ownership of the safe room. Uh, the architect is coming down again on the fifteenth, and we'll have a meeting out there, another walkthrough and look at things. And so that's the earliest, but, um, it's possible that as early as July the sixteenth, we could take ownership of the safe room. He can take over. Uh, I'd like, you know, Dr. Anderson didn't get in to, uh, any further on the safe room, but of course, we recall, the sheriff has agreed that he will take ownership of the safe room and operate it, and also put a good man out there, or a lady, a person out there with a, uh, crew, which will help a lot also on the pavilion. For example, I'm sure that in that crew at some time, the sheriff's gonna have somebody available that can do sheet rock, and, uh, that will help a lot, those types of things.
What about the floor, Hooby?
The what?
The floor?
You know, as we look at the floor, that's not part of the contract as we will know.
Right, are we gonna go ahead and do something about that now?
I think that, uh, in talking with Johnny, uh, we may initially start just, uh, pulling a sealer on the current floor and buffing it up. Uh, and at some time in the future, we say, ah, that's really. Decide in the future it's not satisfactory when just take the ceiling off and, and stain it. But in the meantime.
Thing to do. That's no easy thing to do.
Staining it is.
Well, that has four drains and all that stuff inside. I mean, there's the material.
Yeah, yeah. But we're not gonna, we're, we're not gonna go out and spend the money to try to stain it until we absolutely determine that that's what we have to do.
Well, there's a much better prices for staining and sealing it than we initially had out there.
And, uh, and so that, that's gonna be the initial approach, okay? And, uh.
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be turned over to us that same, we need to be thinking about a budget for down there for mops, cleaning supplies, toilet paper, all, you know, everything that, uh, quickly.
Yeah, we definitely need to get our heads together on how we gonna do this, because honestly, I was thinking that the guy we was gonna hire was gonna do the.
Were we asked that question?
Now, the guy that the sheriff will have is not gonna be an event coordinator for the, uh.
He didn't, the sheriff didn't want that, and.
No, no, he wants to do the theme building. He doesn't want to.
But my guys.
But your guys will be.
They're gonna do all the maintenance of the facility.
Right, exactly, right. Right, but you just don't want to have to manage it and program it and all that stuff. Right, just the safe room. Now, that person will be doing the programming and the maintenance and all that of the safe room. Programming and the.
Well, there'll be a contact number called the sheriff's office to, to schedule, like, if I want to bring it in.
Right.
If it's at the sheriff's office.
Got you. Right, okay.
We're gonna deal with this also in the budget process, which is coming up real soon.
Right.
And to say, how do we really want to coordinate these two and what will be the cost and so forth? And the, uh, we have not gone out on an advertisement for a manager of the multi-purpose pavilion yet. We've got all the information from the committee. But is that what we really want to do? It's a, it's a tough call.
Right.
On, uh, whether it's cost, you know, on the cost effectiveness of it versus, uh, what, what we're gonna get out of it.
Hey, Sheriff, when, uh, when were you thinking about putting?
One person, so temporarily it'll be, uh, cancelled, it'll be, uh, the manager of it.
Right.
Until I can find the right person.
Okay.
I saw him out there last week trimming the bushes.
Oh, yeah?
I can probably help you out on the budgetary piece of, uh, facilities and stuff, but that's what I do over at the other place. I mean, with all that, I mean, it's, it's not that tough, but it's, it is cumbersome, let's put it that way, yeah, so.
I remember when we took one with, uh, the JDC, you know, that we, we had to.
Oh, yeah, you got. You do. And you never know how much it's gonna be, but you have to, you have to have something in place. So.
Well, as long as we get the same return out here.
The, okay, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
That's all you got? Okay, review of the items, July seventh?
Items for, um.
Hope you own the consent agenda, the, uh, sheriff's agreement with TerraCon Consultants. What is that for? Why aren't we doing that?
That's an agreement that is continuing. Uh, it's, it rolls over. It's a, something we do now, and it's just an agreement that, uh, is up for basically renewal.
I guess that's all part of where the supervisor purchased it originally, where they get tested. Is that what that is? Yeah, okay. How long do we?
Every three years? Every three years.
How long do we have to keep doing that? Forever?
Perpetual.
Who sets that? Is it the DQ? So Holly is no longer, uh, gonna be scheduling, so we gonna do that in-house now? Okay, that's good. What are we changing about the rules again at the, the place at the reservoir? It's about third. I meant this year.
Well, we've broken one. We're amending the rental things, being more specific on some of the trash, you know, the roads about what to do because it's being abused. Things are not being taken care of like they should. I went over them with Mr. Brown and Craig Slade, and I put over some language, and so we're putting some teeth to it to help prevent all the abuse on.
Okay. Clarifying what a nonprofit organization really is, for instance.
Yeah.
Um, that's kinda what came up today.
We also, Greg also enhanced the signing of the inspection certificate. The state, we added a little bit to that.
Well, I'm sure if he got involved with it, he got enhanced. Larry, we got in here, we reimbursing you for some software. Do we do that every year? Do what? Be careful what you're saying. Yeah.
Okay, that was a budgeted item, and, uh, it was accidentally painted out of his, uh, fees, so we're reimbursing for that.
I, I noticed that there's one pay increase in here that we really need to take a close look at.
I'm still the lowest paid countywide employee.
Elected, you mean?
Yeah, elected, yes.
Elected official? I'd be one of us.
Oh, yeah, I'm not gonna be here Monday.
Yeah, we are countywide, so.
You're not.
You're not gonna be here Monday?
I'm not. Y'all gonna handle it without me, huh?
Yeah.
We're always happy.
Oh, yeah, I guess so.
Isn't Bloomfield coming up on Monday?
What?
Isn't Bloomfield coming up on Monday?
That's my district.
That's right.
That's Jerry's. That ain't nothing to do with me. Bang, bang.
Any more questions on, uh, July seventh board meeting? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn till, uh, nine o'clock on July seventh?
So, man.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Brown. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.